I go to Princeton University, majoring in psychology.
I go to Harvard and I'm majoring in economics.
I'm going to Duke and I'm majoring in psychology and global health.
I'm going to Johns Hopkins and I'm majoring in chemistry.
Our advantage, great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. See what's possible for you.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses. You can even earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner.
Orange County Public Schools, leading students to success.
I don't know what happened, but y'all saw me talking to Vice Chair Gordon and all of a sudden the room got really quiet. I can't do that with my own board. How do I do that again? That was wonderful. Wow. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Orange County School Board's regularly scheduled meeting. I am going to lead us tonight in our moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance. So if everybody could please stand and bow your head for a brief moment of silence. Amen. And now the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated. Well, Board members, members of the audience, we have a very special recognition this evening, and it's a special one for both this Board and for Dr. Jenkins and the entire administration. And it's not just empty flattery when I tell the members of our Leadership Orange classes out there that this is one of our favorite meetings of the year because it's our graduation and it's a graduation of a program that we all believe so very, very strongly and that we've embraced as a system. And the comments that each of you has made to me immediately before this meeting has just reinforced why this is such a wonderful program that frankly, Mr. Roach deserves tremendous credit for. And we're going to hear from Mr. Roach in a moment. Our Leadership Orange program, and I know I'm preaching to the proverbial choir here among our alumni here in our current class, was developed by our Public Relations Department, and it has given over 125 citizens to date a chance to come experience firsthand what it takes to educate 187,000 students every day, to run the largest government in Central Florida, the largest transportation system, the largest food service system, and the second largest employer in Central Florida. This program, we are very, very proud of the fact that we have seen this time and again. It truly has turned a great many of our alumni into not only public education advocates and leaders in our community, but leaders in their own right, both within their neighborhoods, even outside of the public education realm, and in their cities and in government. Tonight, we are joined by 34 members of this year's Leadership Orange 4 class. Wow, it's hard to believe it's been four classes, Mr. Roach, that came from all over the district, representing many unique interests and backgrounds. And it is a very diverse crowd, which reflects the diversity of our population and the diversity of our students. We are also joined here tonight, and I want to thank them for making time out of their busy schedules to come as well, by alumni of some of the alumni of our previous three classes who have joined us this evening as well. Our class members spent a half-day each month for eight months going to elementary, middle and high schools, and also our technical centers, including Westside Tech. And they even went, of course, to the famous Pine Hills Transportation Center where they drove a bus, which we all want to do, and to learn everything they could about our building program, school budgeting, teaching and learning, community engagement, exceptional student education, and our operations, which included hands-on experience behind that will of the bus, which just one day for chuckles, we need to take a videotape of that and show that at the graduation ceremony. I've heard nothing was destroyed, unlike my attempts to teach my 16-year-old daughter driving, where she has yet to master the art of the radius of a turn without running into something. This evening, their journey ends, but certainly not their involvement with the school district. We are graduating tonight now some of the most knowledgeable citizens on the subject of public education in Orange County, and we want to thank you for that. We will call on you often to participate in our efforts to be one of the top school districts in the entire United States of America. I want to personally thank you all. Many of you answered that call just last week at the State of the Schools address. I was so gratified to see how many were able to find time in your busy schedules to come out to the annual State of the Schools address last week. So thank you for that very, very much. We are going to ask you through your leadership and influence as community leaders to continue to help us spread the word about Orange County Public Schools. And I'm going to go off script a little bit here and throw on my two cents as well, and I think I probably speak for many members of our Board. Help us also to be constructive critics of Orange County Public Schools because we have gone from being a very good Florida public school district to, we believe, one of the great urban districts in the entire United States. But it's because of folks like you who care passionately about public education, who have come to us and said, "You're doing great at this, but we think you can do better at that," or "We think you can improve in this area." We need to hear that constructive suggestions on how we can become even better as a public school system because it's a process of constant improvement. I'd also like to particularly thank Dr. Jenkins and her staff and the dozens of OCPS administrators and staff who shared with you and took time out of their very busy jobs to work with our Leadership Orange class. I'm proud to say that we have some of the hardest-working employees, I believe, in not only all of Central Florida, but the entire state of Florida. We are very, very proud of the fact that we recently found out, and Dr. Jenkins, correct me if I have the number wrong here, we have currently been in the, I guess you would say the top five, but it's really the bottom five of districts in the state of Florida as far as administrative ratios, meaning we've been the top five districts as far as the lowest ratios of administrative personnel to classroom teachers, which is our core mission. And this year again, we were, I believe, number two in the state. If I'm not mistaken, right off memory, we just found out as having the lowest ratio of administrators to classroom personnel. So we're very, very proud of that because at the end of the day, we live in a challenging time where having those teachers in the classroom is really what our core mission is all about and what we exist to support. So thank you very, very much for your participation. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Roach for some few words of recognition. And Board members, any of you who would also like to chime in after Mr. Roach, please feel free to punch your buttons. Mr. Roach.
It's really easy to talk about this program. I will tell you that 16 years ago, I was so excited when I was elected to the school Board, and I just couldn't get enough information. And the more I learned about schools and how we functioned, the more I was just surprised at how all the things I had heard before I was a Board member really weren't true. So I was, it's like, wow, this is really good information. So you can imagine, the first year or so on the Board, anybody that came to my email site or to a phone call or in person and complained about schools, I sat down with them. And I said, "Look, let me just set you straight on this." And I turned so many critics into allies that I thought, this is really, this is like shooting fish in a barrel. It's just information. They have the wrong information. And I think that might have been a time, too, when sometimes the media is not your best friend, especially in those first years. They were really kind of tough on us, so we were able to counter them. But I also knew that I could not do that by myself anymore. It was wearing me out, literally, to try to get people. And the more I talked to them, they seemed to multiply. And so that really was the motivation for the program. It was really out of desperation. And to the Board's credit, I presented this program to them. It made sense to them. We immediately got onto a, we asked for, I remember we asked for a subcommittee to work on it, and all seven of us wanted to work on it. So seven Board members and the staff went together. I think we pounded it out for about four hours one night and handed it over to Dylan Thomas and his staff. And of course, you're a result of that today. So I'm just very, very proud, like Mr. Soblet said, to look out and see this is our fourth graduation class. And it was so fun to go with Dylan to New Orleans and present this to about 45 different school districts, came into our workshop, and heard how this program built and why they should do this. So that's really what it's become. And so now you become knowledgeable citizens about schools. You know more than the average bear. And you have a chance now to set a lot of people straight. Not everybody knows what that means, Kat. It's kind of a, I can always look to see who gets that. More than the average bear. And so you have an opportunity to tell people about our schools and correct people and get them in the right way. Because I think we are where we are because we've had lots and lots of support. So you join a very, very fine bunch of people. I am going to read about three or four quotes that came from you that stood out here about the program. And here's one of them. It says, "It really made me appreciate tremendous challenges, resources, and innovation that go into moving OCPS into the future of education." Another one said, "Being able to see OCPS as a business and being able to understand all of the moving parts. I am blown away by all the services offered to our students." And I will tell you, after 16 years, I continue to be blown away by the services offered to our students. Thirdly, my most memorable session was the budget planning session. And I commend the district for being able to do more with less and to do it gracefully. And finally, I love learning about all that OCPS has to offer so that I can offer correct and positive information, there it is, to the community. The media loves a bad story. Who wrote that one? I like this person. I want to have coffee with you. The media loves a bad story, and unfortunately, that is what the uninformed public so often hears. Now, I will say, though, if the media is here tonight, they've been a lot, they've been a lot better. They have been a lot better. You can quote me on that, Lauren.
You gotta, you gotta stroke them. We love you, Lauren.
I want to be a strong advocate of the public school system, and now I feel properly armed to do just that. So, Mr. Soblet, with that, I say, let's start this commencement process.
Well, let's hear from Ms. Flynn real quick and any other Board members, then we'll get it, show on the road. Ms. Flynn.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank Board Member Yogi. You know, for bringing this concept to us because I think it's brilliant, you know? It's one that I wish I had thought of myself. And I think it does play a very important role in our mission to, you know, move student achievement with our community. And I wanted to thank you for participating in it. I agree with everything you've said as far as you just can't know enough. I mean, when you go through budgeting, even something as what seems as simple as a calendar, you know, it makes you think about it, you know? So I just wanted to thank Mr. Roach for that and for the Board for putting it together, for interested citizens. I think this community deserves to have confidence in their school, public school system, and I think you all can help us soldier that on.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. Mrs. Caddell.
Well, the one thing we haven't figured out yet, we have to get the Alumni Association going because we need to keep them involved and we need to keep all of these friendships that you have going. So that's, that's the one piece that's out there that we haven't quite figured out yet. But that's probably our next challenge is to figure out how we form an Alumni Association so that you guys can stay involved and get updates from time to time. So, you know, it's been great. We've talked about it on and off, but I think as we take it to the next level, since this, we've got so many graduates, we need to figure out how to pull them together from time to time and have a conversation with them.
Great point. Mrs. Gordon.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, like Mr. Roach, you know, I generally sing his praises. And this is one of his brilliant ideas. And I'm really so happy because look at the number of people that we have out there. I too want to just thank Dylan Thomas and his staff. Anything we come up with, we tell the superintendent and then her staff goes out and make, they just make it look like this. You, I mean, you make it, we just say, "This is what we want." And the operation just starts, and this is the outcome. You're just great, positive leaders for us, and we thank Mr. Roach. He's been hassling over this for many, many years, trust me. I've been on here, I'm the second one on the Board that's been here the longest with them, and I've heard it over and over. And he's been running all over Brevard County and everywhere else, trying to get other school districts to adopt this idea. And I just think it's just one of the best. And I want to thank you. You've just been a great group. And what I like is that you come from all over the district, and you have been a great advocate for us. And the scholarships, I think they give that, you know, if that's happening in there. I just think it's wonderful. But I do want to salute Mr. Roach for this, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Roach, thank you. And I thank you for taking of your most important time and your family members and coming to learn about OCPS because now you would be the best voice. And I do want to say to Lauren, a lot of people read your articles in Panama and New York and said you had a great article on Orange County Public Schools. So I just want to say that to our media this time. And hopefully, we'll get a good article on this tonight that you are here graduating.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair Gordon. All right. At this time, Board members, we are going to start the graduation commencement exercise. If Board members can please join us at the front of the room. And Leadership Orange graduates, I want to give you an apology. I've got to step out for a moment. I'm going to be back at the meeting, but I'm going to miss the actual graduation ceremony. Forgive me. But thank you again for your service to Orange County Public Schools, all of you.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you the Class of 2014, Class Four of Leadership Orange. Our first graduate, Deanna Altaleo. Antonio Arias is not with us this evening. Lillian Bell. Shelby Benson. George Barelli. Linda Browning. Dale Buda. Billy Butterfield. Kristy Camera. Susan Clary. Patrick Delerme. Anderson Tavilas. Suzanne Dush. And Kim Edwards. Blanca Flores. Jeanne Ford. Leisha Gray. Kent Gritten. Sarah Ha. Becky Junod. Mark Kaiser. Stephen Larson. John Lazenby. Kimberly Lee. Commissioner Robert Bobby Oshewski. Jessica Perettis. Kelly Pounds. Matthew Presser. Rusty Saunders. Sadia Sunnah. And last but not least, Kalen Stroud. And somehow now, we're going to take a group picture.
We would really like to thank the Superintendent and her great staff and Mr. Dylan Thomas and his wonderful staff for this beautiful graduation. I just think this is so awesome when you see adults graduating. So let's give them another round of applause as they go forward and spread the good word about Orange County Public Schools. And I think Ms. Caddell's suggestion on the alumni, some of my parents were saying, "Hey, I'm ready to do that." So I think, Mr. Roach, that's one of the last tasks that you may have to do to make sure that we get that going. And we'll ask the Superintendent to see that they could probably meet so often so that we can keep them together. And maybe we may consider a little wall of fame or something, some kind of way, for those who hang in there with us. So we really want to thank you, Mr. Roach, and thank you, Dr. Jenkins, and your wonderful staff, and especially Mr. Thomas. I think Dylan Thomas had a great time doing this. So, citizens of Orange County, we love you and we thank you for your dedication. At this time, Madam Superintendent, I'm going to turn it over to you for the strategic plan update. I believe we have the Orange County Public School District Monitoring Process for Charter Schools Audit. It is our advisory committee. The report will be coming from Mr. Jim Ingersoll, Chairman of the Audit Advisory Committee, and I see Ms. Linda, Lindsey, over there. So, Madam Superintendent, if you will bring them up for me, I would be very grateful, and so would the Board.
Jim Ingersoll is Chairman of our Audit Committee, and they, while we have no ability for extreme oversight of our charter schools, they were asked to at least look at what the provisions were, particularly after we had some notoriety around misappropriation of funds by a charter school. They agreed at least to look at the process. And so Jim Ingersoll consented to be here tonight to share with you the Audit Committee's review and findings. Mr. Ingersoll.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. As she mentioned, we did a review. We didn't do an audit. It would be basically impossible, but we reviewed the processes. So let me, let me start. That worked well. Wrong way. Okay. On the 21st of March last year, we went in there and we looked at the North Star, there were two major issues, as was mentioned. We reviewed the materials related to the North Star Charter School. Then we reviewed our existing standard operating procedures. And then we, as part of this, we met with the school choice people, the legal department, the internal audit, and we all met at a meeting. And we spent about two and a half hours going over all the different things. I might tell you that in advance, we received the manual itself, and we literally went through the procedures individually, and then we met and talked about them. The North Star Charter, I'm not going to spend much time on it, except back then, we reviewed it, we looked at it, looked at the contracts and Florida statutes. There was nothing else that could be done. It's a lesson that was learned, and you go forward from that. So I'm not going to spend any time on that. We did look in depth at the school choice SA, Standard Operating Procedures, and we noticed how they'd evolved and how things had taken place and how they predicated their procedures on the best practices of the state of Florida and the national programs. Also, you've developed a LEEDs process, which was very impressive. It's designed to go out and you have a team of, you have a team, a LEEDs team, all people from each different function. of, you have a team, a leads team, all people from each different function. They'll go out to the schools and find out what's happening, and visit them on a monthly basis. So I think that was very impressive. What we did notice is the leads process seemed very effective to us. We didn't go into the charter school opening procedures in depth. We spent a lot of time talking about how one starts up, how you have to do this, and et cetera. And we found that we documented it well. We also, at this point in time, we'd already added a finance person to the review of the monthly financial statements and annual audits, which is a major step forward. And basically, if we look at this, the standard operating procedures were well designed and thorough. And I'll touch base on the financial person in a minute. We did have some recommendations, although they were minor. In my case, because in my background, as you know, from Darden Restaurants, I wrote corporate policy statement. So I found some words in there that I wanted to be changed, tighten them up, et cetera, clear cut things. But overall, I found them to be very good. We did establish a program for when we identified a closure coming up. And we don't set a standard date, but we do have 30 days. The idea behind it was, once we had enough information and things like that, that we'll set a timeframe. Said, okay, I got to close it. We want closure potentially. Then we send them a letter, and it's 30 days for them to respond, which is something we didn't have before. Next, we required, we requested, I don't know if I can say require, we requested use of a standard format for monthly financial reports by charter schools. Because at this point in time, they were getting all sorts of different financial statements, and different methods and all that. So what we were saying is, if you think about this, Group A, whatever that line item might be, has this in it for each individual school, so you can ascertain what it looks like across. At that point, when we looked at them, they were all over the place. So we requested they standardize them. So even though absolute dollars can be higher, obviously, from one place to another, but you can establish ratios, you can look at things, and you can better understand what's in each one of the statements. So, and I turned my page on this, and Dr. Benner and his people were already looking at things, and had gone to the state of Florida and made recommendations to amend the process, and to provide a concise, uniform monthly financial statement. And it was adopted by the Board of Education in 2013, which speaks a lot to what Bill had said recently, is that, you know, you're working your way up. I mean, we're out in the front, going to the board, saying, hey, we need to do these kinds of things to make it better. So I think that's very, very good. And the, the school staff monitors the activity and all that with new uniform monthly reports, which is a real benefit. So, in conclusion, I think it's well-run. I think the procedures are good. It's professional. It's proactive. It's thorough. And these things should serve OP's Orange County Public Schools Charter System well, as long as we stay with them and work with them and make adjustments as time goes on. This thing is a living document, as you probably know, because of state statutes as they change and everything, which is important. Our public school practice are sound. And when we were meeting with them, the staff looks to continue to look to improve processes. And they were very receptive to our suggestions and ideas. Overall, I think we're on the right road, and we have the procedures in place. Just keep going, and I, I think we're in good shape. So with that, I'll open the door to any kind of questions. If I can't ask them, Dr. Benner came with me. So, if not?
Yes. Thank you so very much for a very fine report. And each board member has that report in their package. And Ms. Cadel does have a comment, and she will be followed by Ms. Christine Moore. Ms. Cadel?
One of the things that, when you're chairman of the school board, that you have the privilege of doing is serving on the audit committee. And Mr. Ingersoll has been there for at least six years, if not longer. And he has done a really good job of looking at all of our processes. And so I really appreciate your service to us, and the team of experts that you have been able to get to come to the table to help us. And it was interesting, because in my role as past president of the Florida School Boards Association, many of us here are real, are aware of some of the issues that the Manatee County School Board got into with financial management. And they were called up to the Auditor General's office to talk to the Auditor General. And, you know, it was, some of the things they talked about, they never really thought about having an outside audit committee with professionals. And that's the one thing that we've really got a wealth of help with, is we have professionals who are willing to step up to the plate, not doing business with us at this time, and say, you know, this is a best practice. So would you please share my thanks with the entire committee the next time you meet? Because we could not buy your expertise that we have sitting at that table. And I am very appreciative of you looking over what we're doing and making sure that we keep our eye on the prize. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And I'll pass that on.
That was wonderful, Ms. Moore. Thank you, Ms. Cadel.
Thank you, Mrs. Cadel, for, for, for starting the conversation off with all the niceties. And I just, I actually have some specific questions, but we really do appreciate, Mr. Ingersoll, your, your service. You're always here to help us. Maybe you could help me, I don't know if we need a Dr. Benner, but what is the difference in the types of audits that school districts go through versus charter school? Are they the same? Are they as comprehensive? Are there any differences?
Well, the school gets audited by Ernest and Young, and you know, those, the charter schools have audits done on, you know, they prepare their financial statements and send them in. I don't think you can really compare that, because ENY comes in, and they, they bring in their experts in all the different areas. But the charter schools just have their financial statements prepared by an outside auditing firm, CPA firm, and they prepare, prepare that. And you don't get anywhere as close to the scrutiny that you would get with Ernest and Young. This doesn't, you get a lot more scrutiny with ENY than you would get with one of these groups that come and look at the financial statements. I can't categorically say that across the way, but you got like 34 charter schools, but it won't be consistent. That's all I'm saying.
So it's a little bit more difficult. So then, with this standard form that you have for budgeting, would that help us to catch any items that might be of concern? And would that have actually prevented the situation with North Star?
No, not at, that's totally different. Not at all. If we had it fine-tuned and all that, it was still after the fact, and when it happened. And by that time, the year was over, and it was done. And the contract didn't allow for us to come back. We have clawback features now, but we backed it. We didn't.
Okay, so do you have any suggestions, or is, or maybe the solutions legislative ones, so that the, the public could have the same confidence with, with a charter budget as they would a district budget?
Not really. That's over my pay grade. And when you get to legislative process, I'm afraid that I really can't speak to that. And I wish I could help you, but I can't. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Well, that's it for my questions. Mrs. Gordon, thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Mrs. Moore. And maybe some kind of way the superintendent can help get that last question that you asked, get some kind of point to it, and we'll have her address it either now, not now, but at, at the end after Ms. Flynn, when she makes her closing comments from Ms. Ingersoll and Ms. Lindsey. Ms. Flynn?
Thank you, Madam vice chair. Recently, I think I and the other board members were approached by a representative of a charter school who wanted to reverse the way their funding is dispersed to them. I understand that now bills are paid, they submit those expenses, and then are reimbursed. Is that correct? They, like, they pay for their rent, and then?
You receive, they receive the money, and they pay their bills from there. That's...
But do they have to show them? Because from what I understand, their request was, well, we think that the funding should come first, and then we, we pay and reconcile it. And so what I, it looks like Ms. Lindsey is...
Do you want to say anything to that?
Ms. Lindsey, if you want to address that for Ms. Flynn, that would be great.
Just a point of clarification to Mrs. Flynn's question.
Thank you.
The reimbursement process is true for capital money or grants. For operating funds, it's handled through normal cash flow and...
Okay, so that was just for the capital. Okay. So you didn't look at that, though? That wasn't reviewed?
Everything was reviewed. All of the operating practices and procedures that were in place at that time, and that are being used by OCPS, were reviewed by the committee in great depth at that time.
But the procedures for doing the operating fund, I mean, the capital funds as well? Okay. So I guess my question really quick was, did you find that the system worked for most of the charter schools versus maybe the one who was coming to us? Because the question was, from them, was, we'd like to have the funding first, that, rather than the way it's being dispersed now. Did other board members have this? Okay, so am I expressing, expressing it right?
What are they actually, what are they looking to do, I guess, when?
Well, I think what they are doing right now is they pay their rent, and then reimburse, or submit for reimbursement of rent or mortgage, or whatever they're doing. And they wanted to have the funds upfront, because it looked like some of them were having troubles with their own financial procedures of putting together the paperwork and submitting it to us. So they would run...
Well, Ms. Ingersoll, maybe I can get Dr. Bernier to assist a little bit here, since he's on the superintendent's staff, to handle that area for us.
Well, my question just in regard to the audit was...
I think it will help, though. It'll clear it up, Ms. Flynn, and it'll get to you.
Thank you.
I think I can answer the question this way. The standard operating procedure that was in place at the time was reviewed by Mr. Ingersoll and the rest of the committee. That standard operating procedure was written at that time, because capital outlay is a categorical fund, and there are specific rules for how it can be spent. We do work a reimbursement process for those, because if it's spent incorrectly, then we have to go back across to fix it. We prefer to review the documents before releasing the checks because of the categorical nature of the funds. They did look at that standard operating procedure. That book's pretty thick, and I wouldn't press Mr. Ingersoll at this point to give him a quiz on every one of that he read. I mean, he did a fabulous job in reviewing them.
Not after a year later, but I think you ought to entertain anything, frankly, from a business standpoint. Take a look at it anyways, and I, I can't speak to it. I don't, I'm having trouble, operating funds, if I had my money upfront, I'd be much better off, too. It depends how you look at it. I, you know, if I got my money, I, then I, I'm not probably going to respond as quickly to you to send my invoices in to get my money. You know, there's, it's both ways. So it's an interesting process, so.
Well, they're, they were claiming that it was rightly theirs. But, okay, well, it sounds like you didn't see anything out of the ordinary, and it must not be across the board that other charters might be having the same issue, so.
Back then, I didn't see anything like that. But that's over a year, so I can't really speak to it, to be honest with you.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. You can remain. And that's, Dr. Jenkins, can you close us out on this? All right. But I would like to thank, on behalf of the board and the chairman, Ms. Lindsey, for working with you, Dr. Bernier, and that, and the team of expert, as Ms. Cadel so eloquently placed it. But Mr. Ingersoll, your work is just untouchable, and we really appreciate what you do, and it helped us. I could remember the time, and I think Laurie could say it too, when we were in just total chaos. And you had to come before this board, but we got it all straightened out. But I think we're well on our way, and we're very grateful. So with that in mind, and a volunteer, that, he doesn't get his money, Ms. Flynn, upfront at all. He doesn't get any. So I love that. So, Dr. Jenkins, if you would close us out on our strategic plan update as it relates to the process for Charter Schools Audit Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Chairwoman. I would say, as well as everyone else has said, thank you to Mr. Ingersoll and his committee, who do provide their expertise and their work, not only for this review, but for our entire audit procedure, free of charge. Years of service to this district, we commend you. Give your best to, give our best to your wife, who's recovering as well, and thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so very much. And with that in mind, I know you're all going to leave, so everybody else can stay, hopefully. At this time, any individual that would like to address an item on the consent or the non-consent agenda may do so by completing the appropriate yellow form. And it's at the board table over by Mrs. McGill, which is on my right and your left. The chair will also call for you to speak when the item that you have signed up for is before the board and on the agenda. Please understand that in accordance with the parliamentary procedure, this is your opportunity to testify before the board. It is not a question-and-answer session, nor is it an opportunity to engage in a debate with the board. Staff is available to meet with you after, or even doing, to speak with you, should you have any questions. And the board members are always happy to meet with you after the meeting, should you wish to discuss your issues of concern with them. You will have three minutes to address the board, and we generally don't just signify or call out anybody's particular name to an issue. We pretty much would like to deal with just the issues and not a personal name. So if you have any schedule restraint, constraint, please let Ms. McGill know that, and we will accommodate you as quickly as we can, so that you could address your item. Board members, if you notice, we're looking down, we're looking in books, we're looking to our left and right, and sometimes we turn our back and we look up at the top. We have a monitor in the front of us and a screen in the back, so that we can see what is going on, even on the large overhead screen. So at this time, Mrs. McGill, if you would call the roll. Okay. All righty, and all the present, except for Mr. Sublett, and he will return shortly. All righty, thank you. Okay. Dr. Jenkins, introduction of newly appointed administrators.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we only have one. That is Nancy Willoughby, who was administrative dean at Eastlake Elementary. She will become the assistant principal at Eastlake Elementary.
Good evening. I'd like to thank Mr. Sublett, Ms. Cadel, and the entire school board for this wonderful opportunity. Also, a special thank you to Dr. Jenkins and her staff for this opportunity. Thank you also to my principal, Mr. Rizzo, my colleagues and friends, all who have been a fabulous support along the way. Finally, I couldn't be here without the love and support of my family, my parents, who couldn't be here but deserve to be recognized, my husband, Tim, and my children, Catherine, David, and Matthew. Thank you.
Let me just ask you, are they all in public school? I'm just asking, having fun with you.
Catherine graduated last year from OCPS, and my two boys are students at Eastlake Elementary.
Yes, all right. Okay. And the board member for that area, would you like to address it, Ms. Cadel?
I had just an opportunity to congratulate her before. And Eastlake is just doing wonderful things, and they're very busy out there, and I'm always very proud of them. So I know you'll do a great job out there.
Thank you.
All right. With that in mind, Ms. Nancy Willoughby, we will, we'll ask the superintendent to excuse you. Mr. Sublett always say, go get ice cream, but this is a Tuesday night.
Thank you.
So thank you so very much, and we wish you the best. You're in good hands. And take good care of your husband, Tim. And congratulations to the graduate of OCPS. All righty. Okay, with that in mind, at this time, Dr. Jenkins, are there any changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, there are four changes to the agenda. Item 4.03 has the corrected background language for you, for your review. Addendum to item 10.01, that is a request of approval of bids. There was a revised bid matrix added after the board book was released. Addendum to item 1401, we are actually going to move that to item 1802, and it will become a subject of discussion under the School Board Attorney's Report. The entire resolution was added after the release of the board book. And then finally, item 1702, that is a CEA, moved to item 1402 under the Approval of Legal Audit Issue, Legal and Audit Issues Consent Section. That is it, Madam Chair.
Thank you so very much, Lieutenant Jenkins. The chair find cause to amend the agenda has requested. Is there a motion? Move. All right, very good. It is moved by Ms. Robinson and seconded by Ms. Cadel. All in favor and opposes? The motion carries unanimously. Let the record reflect that. At this particular time, Madam Superintendent, we move to our public hearing, board members. We have two public hearings. The first will be the Request Approval of Modifiers to Board Policy DFA, which is the Use of Surplus Funds. And the second public hearing is the Request Approval of Modification to 2014/2015 Code of Student Conduct. Remember, you may speak to these items within our public hearing. You need to see Mrs. McGill at the very end of the desk. Madam Superintendent.
Madam Chair, board members, you will recall, these were workshopped last week. The first one was essentially some adjustments to our policy on the use of our surplus funds and investments. That information was reviewed thoroughly with the board. For the sake of the public, want them to know we had this discussion last week. There were no questions or comments from the public during the workshop. Certainly, we are available. Chief Financial Officer Rick Collins is available if there are any questions or a need for further explanation of the revisions to this policy.
All right, thank you so very much, board members. Do you want to speak to it first? I have no placards up here from the public. And I have Ms. Cato, I have you, so do you want to go, do you want to do it first?
I was just going to go ahead and help you make a motion to approve it.
All right.
So I move the approval of modifications to board policy D F A A, use of surplus funds.
All those, okay, we have a second, moved by Ms. Cato, seconded by Ms. Ghul. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Nay. We don't have any nays, I'm just saying, repeating it. So with all that, the motion is carried unanimously by the board. Thank you. Now we're on 3.02. Madam Superintendent.
Madam Chair, this was also workshopped last week. There was no public input. It is a request for approval to modifications to our Code of Student Conduct.
Ms. Cato, are you back again to address that item for us?
Sure.
All righty.
I move the approval of modifications to the 2014-15 Code of Student Conduct.
Is seconded by Ms. Ghul, and moved by Ms. Cato. All those in favor of approving the modification, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes by nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried unanimously. Next, we're for the consent agenda. Are there any items that the board member wanted to pull from the consent agenda?
No, I'll move.
Okay. All right, it is being moved by Mrs. Robinson to accept the consent agenda, and Mr. Roach is seconding that. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye. Opposes, nay. The motion is carried unanimously by all board members present. All right, thank you so very much. With that in mind? No. I'll tell you about it. Okay. And now, Dr. Jenkins, I'm going to turn it back to you on the, let's go back to the items, on the changes. Okay, we don't have the, the non-consent on this one, on the items. We moved it to 18.01. Okay, all righty.
Madam Chairman, that comes under your general counsel, Mr. Rodriguez, for his report, and then I will follow with my report.
All right, thank you so very much. General Counsel Rodriguez, you ready to report to the board on this item?
Madam Chair, let me get to one of the other items because I've got three reports for you besides this one, and I'm having technical difficulties pulling up the ballot language. I did want to have it in front of me while we discuss it, if that's okay.
Right, I remember you talked with the board members in reference to that. Is it in our board doc, General Counsel?
It is, but I can't access, with something's going on with my computer, where I can't get to the computer, Ms.
Okay, can you get on Mrs. McGill's computer?
She's doing that, she's doing that.
Very good. And Joey has hers up, would that help? Mrs. Cato's computer is up. Thank you, Mrs. Cato. Okay, Ms. Nancy.
Is that what you want?
Yeah. Okay, board members, so you'll notice, first of all, if you look at the, the, the package that was adopted in 2002, in addition to the official ballot language, which is really the language that's going to be presented to the voters, there's also a resolution that has a series of whereas clauses. We are preparing that, as well as a quote-unquote "plan" that is prescribed by statutes. Mr. Morris and Mr. Collins and I will be working on that. But I wanted to direct your attention to the, the ballot language. The couple of things you should be wary of or knowledgeable of, and you may already know this, is, first of all, the title has to be confined to 15 words or less. The text of the language should be, it should be, first of all, phrased in the form of a question that will be answered either as a yes, or no, or for, or against the, the sales tax. And then, that language is also limited to 75 words or less, and dates and so forth, I would, I always count them as individuals, so December 31st, 2025, I count that as three, just to be on the safe side. Really, the, the purpose of it is, is to make sure that it encompasses the desires of the board, but also presents an accurate and defensible explanation of what the ballot measure is. And in my experience in the past, when you try and get a little bit too cute with the language, is when you end up drawing some opposition legally. So we continue to refine it to make sure it is accurate, complete. That language you see there is language that began with the previous language. It has been tweaked considerably several times and presented, I think, to the Communications Committee meeting at the most recent meeting. But if you could, over the next few days, take a look at that. If you have any comments, suggestions, queries, please let me know. And then at the next communications meeting, I may just, you know, give you the final version at that point. Definitely by the time your June 10th meeting rolls around and that agenda is developed and submitted for your approval, you will see the final language. The way it reads now is, the title is "One Half-Cent Sales Tax." It's "One Half-Cent Sales Surtax for School Construction, Renovation, Technology Retrofitting, and Land Acquisition." I think that's right at 14 words. And then the language reads, "Shall the School Board of Orange County, Florida, extend the current one-half-cent, cent, sales surtax to fund the construction and renovation of school facilities, including the cost of retrofitting and providing technology implementation, and any related land acquisition, land improvement, design, and engineering costs, including any bond indebtedness with continued oversight by an independent committee, beginning January 1, 2016, and ending December 31, 2025?" And then the perfunctory for and against language. I will also let you know that some of these words, for example, the land improvement, retrofitting, technology, implementation, so forth, some of those are taken directly from Florida statutes. So to the extent that that is what is allowable uses under the sales tax provisions of Florida law, we want to make sure we mirror that, and we're not conveying some other use. But other than one or two words that I think need to be tweaked, I think this is almost in its final form.
Very good. I think that most of the board members, when we took a look at the language, we kind of liked what we saw, but I'm glad that you were able to pick up that it does need a little bit more tweaking. And I know with the Communications Committee, which is under Ms. Christine Moore, we'll be able to get back in there with that. Three very important committees, and I know you've already given a verbal report in the pre-agenda meeting, which was the budget by Ms. Cato and communications with Ms. Moore and legislated with Darrell Flynn. All of those are very, very important committee meetings as it relates to what we are doing, even as it relates to the information that you just shared with us, General Counsel. It will all be reflected in there, and it is needed, and then what happens from what you're working on for us will be able to help our board to move forward. So at this time, are there any comments coming from any board members in reference to this? And we, it's in the hands of the General Counsel and those, and I know Ms. Moore is going to be working side by side there, and other board members, to make sure that we get it done right through the General Counsel's office. So at this time, Dr. Jenkins? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, we have Ms. Pam Ghul and then Ms. Cato. Thank you, ladies.
You, you said if we had suggestions to get it to you, and then it would circle back around, so we just do that. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
And I think that's important, because I think that was one of the aspect, it was, it was circled, but we didn't get it, all of it, like we needed it. So very good, very good, Ms. Ghul. Ms. Cato?
Well, and I'm not sure, for people who are listening or who may be watching, we're talking about it, but I don't know that we said that we're looking at it for the August ballot.
Very good point.
I think that, you know, that needs to be pointed out, that.
And I'll ask Dr. Jenkins to address that when she gives her report as superintendent. So thank you for that, Ms. Cato. Are there any all hearts are satisfied as it relates to this and the General Counsel? All right, they're pleasers for you to move forward, General Counsel and Superintendent. At this time, Dr. Jenkins, if you could give us your report? Oh, you have one more, that's right.
Well, three more, sorry.
Oh, yeah, three more, we have the, that's right, we have a couple of major things, so this is the time to bring it out.
Right.
Go ahead, Mr. Counsel.
The next item is, I know, I know we just had a executive session on this, and you'll have two more tonight, but I just need to announce that there, there's another executive session scheduled. The School Board of Orange County, Florida, will meet in an executive session to discuss the matter of School Board of Orange County, Florida versus Renaissance Charter School, Inc., Renaissance Charter Schools at Central Florida, A, B, and C, on July 29, 2014, immediately following a scheduled 5:30 PM school board meeting on the ninth floor, Superintendent's Conference Room, Ronald Block Educational Leadership Center. At this address, the meeting will be transcribed by a court reporter, and the transcript will be available for public review at the conclusion of the litigation. The following persons may be in attendance, all school board members, myself as General Counsel, Dr. Barbara Jenkins as Superintendent, Mr. John Palmorini as Associate General Counsel and a court reporter. And this, and this will go downstairs, and that's just to reserve a time for the July 29th meeting. This may or may not be moved up depending on the nature of that case. The next report, board members, is the Value Adjustment Board is seeking active, interested board members, as well as two volunteers from the community. I have spoken to Ms. Flynn, who is your current V A B representative, and I've spoken to Ms. Moore. If it's the pleasure of the board, I just would need to get the names of those interested so we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting and ratify those two, as well as the two volunteers. My understanding is the two volunteers we currently have, have done an exceptional job of showing up, and they own property in Orange County, which are the two requisites. And so is, if it's the pleasure of the board, can I put those two names and the two board members' names?
I would, I would ask a board member to do that, and I would like to ask them what's their pleasure.
Thank you.
What's your pleasure, board member? And we have, two names have been offered, Mrs. Darrell Flynn and Mrs. Christine Moore to serve on the Value Adjustment Board for us. Okay? It has been moved.
Thank you. I, I'm happy to accept for another year, unless someone else would want the experience. But I'm, I'm happy to do it. I'm in a groove.
Okay, and I do understand that it's well attended by O C P S members. Let me, I ask a question here and interject. Also, with Ms., with the names on the floor at this particular time, I'm going to ask, we put the names back, oh, Mr. Roach did it, for Ms. Flynn and Ms. Moore, is there an alternate?
Ms. Moore.
Ms. Moore would be the alternate.
As the, yeah, that's the current setup.
I know Ms. Cato has served in the past, so as an alternate. Yes, and you've always right. And I understand that this is a great job, board, for all of us who can serve on it to serve. The time that you meet is kind of difficult at times, so all of us cannot be very privy to be on the big dog boat, but it's okay. All right. So with that in mind, who moved it? I know Mr. Roach second.
Ms. Gordon, we'll put it on the agenda. It's not on the agenda, this, go around. I wasn't asking to put it on, and I was really.
But I need the names to be placed on.
Okay.
For nomination.
Okay.
All right, so I did not, I got a second from Mr. Roach. Ms. Cato, did you nominate to place the two names on? Thank you. All right, it's been properly moved by Mrs. Cato, seconded by Mr. Roach. All those in favor, please say aye. And opposes, nay. Motion is carried to place a nomination, and they will be voted on at the next board meeting, right, General Counsel?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, the names of Mrs. Christine Moore and Ms. Darrell Flynn to represent us at a great Value Adjustment Board. Thank you so very much, General Counsel for pointing that out. I think you have one or two more items to address this board with.
One more, Ms., Madam Chair, and that is, just wanted to give you all an update at the last meeting. I know there was discussion about Eatonville and the town of Eatonville and where we are with the current negotiations. I have spoken to Madam Chair Gordon, because I think it was at her request to schedule a work session. Of course, the, the concern that Ms. Fernandez and I have with that process is it will not allow you to really discuss the details of your offer, because once you do that, you're, you're doing it in a public setting, so there's no confidentiality. Also, can I call an executive session on that matter, because you're not in litigation with the town of Eatonville? So we will brief each of the board members for the historical perspective individually, and then I would ask that you nominate a board member to represent this organization in any future mediations or negotiations, much like you did in the West Orange situation. Of course, that individual can only speak to the board on behalf of the board up to a certain extent, but ultimately, it would come back to the board for your approval. I think the town of Eatonville, where they find themselves right now, is they would like to get us to, get you guys to reduce your price from the current price of 10 million plus. They're at two and a half, 3 million, so there is a lot of room still to go before, you know, we reach a conclusion. But if we're willing to try it, if that's a pleasure of the board, then let me know who your representative is, and we'll begin the process of setting that up.
So how would you like the board to go about doing that, the same process that we did previously when we were assisting Mrs. Ghul?
Yeah, if, if we get a motion for representative, if that's the pleasure of the board, if there's no motion, then I'll understand that that means that you're not interested in proceeding with a negotiated, mediated process.
How, how quickly would you need a nomination? Because I, I would not want to do it without the chairman being present for that particular one, so that he would have a voice in that, just out of respect.
We could do it at the next board meeting, that's fine.
Okay. All right, but Ms. Robinson has something to say, and also, Ms. Pam Ghul has something to say.
I was going to go ahead and nominate the chair, since he was who represented us in our last mediation.
Well, all right.
You know, kind of, it's, we've set a precedent that he's our mediator, that he's our voice, and he's our mediator, so, you know, I, I was comfortable doing that, even though it's my district, Eatonville is in my district, I'm very comfortable allowing the chair to, Sublett, to handle that mediation. So is everyone comfortable voting on that tonight, letting him be our mediator? Or do you feel it needs to?
Do I hear nods, consensus on that? Okay, with that in mind, will you move to it? Will you just make a motion, and we'll inform him if it passes?
I think he'll be fine. I, I mean, he didn't say no last time, so I'm making an assumption. I move that Chairman Sublett be our representative on the mediation for the Eatonville property.
Okay, it was moved by Mrs. Robinson and seconded by Mrs. Cato, that Chairman Sublett serve as our representative on the Eatonville procedures, along with the General Counsel, being that it came from Mrs. Robinson's community. I think she feels very comfortable with that. All those in favor, say aye. Opposes, nay. It passes unanimously with all of those present here at the board table. Thank you so very much, Ms. Robinson, because we did not know. We all are very particular about our community, and we are funny about who speaks for our community, and I think every one of us in here are very protective of that. So if, we'll ask the superintendent and the General Counsel to inform the chair that he has been selected as our voice to negotiate and come with some type of settlement so that we will move on, and the town of Eatonville will be able to grow. All right, thank you, Ms. Robinson, for that. That was a hard, tough matter, and we got it done in less than a minute. Woman power. Okay, all right. With that in mind, I would, I would like to get the superintendent's report at this particular time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have four brief items. First of all, since you mentioned some statement regarding having our extension of the sales tax on the August ballot, what I did want to make sure the board is aware of is that we will have an extensive timeline and campaign information ready at the next, after the next Communications Committee meeting. Want to be very clear, our principals and staff and board will be well aware that our campaign has to do with informing the public of what is actually to come before them. We cannot campaign certainly for an, an actual vote, for a particular vote, but we will work very hard with our schools and our principals and our avenues of communication to make sure they are well informed about that vote. And so you'll hear more about that timeline in the, in the weeks and months to come. Secondly, if you hadn't seen the email already, we are very pleased certainly that our teachers ratify. that our teachers ratified their contract with a 95% yes vote, uh, 5% no vote. Over 5,200 votes were cast, so we're certainly very pleased on behalf of, of our teachers. And then I see our CTA president is here as well. Thirdly, you may have heard some information regarding, um, uh, may have heard some information regarding the Paramore area K-8, and so we did release a statement for media inquiries because there was some misinformation. Uh, I will just read it to you briefly. Over the past few years, the OCPS school board has discussed the potential for five new K-8. One in the Wedgeville area of East Orange County is currently under design and is scheduled to open to students in August of 2016. Another in the Paramore area near downtown Orlando is in the early stages of planning. We anticipate it will open in August 2017. As with all of our schools, we conduct a comprehensive due diligence on the property to ensure suitability for construction. Our investigation includes geotechnical, environmental, and traffic studies to ensure the integrity of the site and the well-being of our students and employees. Decisions regarding the details for the school are in the early planning stages and will be shared in the future. That was a statement that we released. And lastly, I saved, uh, the most exciting, that, that you didn't already hear about for last, because I know you read the email already on the teacher vote. Um, our broad reporting out on Friday was phenomenal. They were very complimentary of this board, of the vision, of the alignment, uh, that we have moving forward in that vision, as well as our student outcomes. They interviewed over 300 individuals during that time that they were here and said they heard consistent messages regarding, uh, our purpose and where we're headed with our students. If, if you're going to make your assumptions from that report out, we'd say, well, surely we're going to win. But, but I am certain that Guilford County, not Guilford County, Gwinnett County, I'm sure, I am certain that Gwinnett County had a very positive reporting out as well. Otherwise, we wouldn't both be finalists. But I want you to know, um, how pleased we were, um, uh, they interviewed three different board members. That was Ms. Gordon, Ms. Cadel, and Chair Siblet. And I will tell you, um, how pleased they were to hear of an aligned board that works well together, because that is just not always the case. And I've said over and over again, but I like repeating it, uh, that I work with a very fine board that is capable of the work, that is certainly focused on governance and getting our vision and mission accomplished. And so, uh, one of their highlights was, uh, uh, school board relations and how focused our school board is. We want to publicly thank all of those who participated, uh, particularly my, um, executive cabinet and those members who worked late night hours to make sure they had all of the documents prepared, uh, and those who accommodated the scheduling, uh, especially, uh, Dr. Pope, uh, Dr. Tovine, Dr. Jara, and all of their staff, uh, for pitching in. Want to publicly thank them, as well as all of my cabinet. And I have said clearly, both to the folks from Broad and to anyone else who would listen, uh, we certainly attribute gaining of that recognition, uh, not to one individual, but to an entire board, to an entire leadership team, to our teachers who do a phenomenal job in the classrooms and principals every day in every classroom for every child. But we also want to commend our entire community because they wrap their arms around our children and help support them and get them to success. And so, um, thanks again to the school board. We wait until September 22nd, when Secretary of Education Arnie Duncan will have an envelope handed to him onstage in New York and open that envelope and, uh, announce who the winner is. We declare that we are winners already because our students will get that $250,000 for scholarship money. Uh, certainly would like to have the additional half million, but nonetheless, we celebrate the successes here in Orange County Public Schools, thanks to the board as well.
Wow. Any comments from the board members who've got to say something, Joey Cadel?
Well, when I found out I was being interviewed, because they were, they wanted to know 2010 to 2000, or 2009 to 2012? 13, so I was chairman of the board during part of that. And I called Dr. Pope in, and I'm like, oh, my gosh, if we blow, um, if I blow it, I'm gonna feel so bad that we don't get it. But I have to tell you, it was the toughest interview I ever went through. I told him, I said, you know, if you finish in 70 minutes, it's okay. And they're like, oh, no, we'll go the whole 90 minutes. And they actually went an extra 10 minutes. And by the time it was over, I felt like I had had a sieve on my head, and they were trying to squeeze my brains out. But, um, it was, it, you know, I've, they kept asking me about our finances, Mr. Collins. And the very last question they asked me, they said, they said to me, they said, "Well, how do you know your strategic plan's working?" And I thought, okay, Joey, take a deep breath and think for a moment. So I took a deep breath, and the best thing I could come up with was, I looked at him and I said, "Well, you're here visiting us, and we're getting the Sterling Award on Friday night, so something must be working." But, um, you know, at that point, I was like, uh, that's the best I've got for you. But I have to tell you, being at that press conference and the enthusiasm of everyone at Oak Ridge, Mrs. Gordon's enthusiasm, the tour, the staff that was there, and hearing from the representative from the foundation and talking about who that scholarship money is for. And Mrs. Flynn and I were there when the governor came to Colonial High School, and we heard of children who were doing phenomenal things, but they don't qualify for, for traditional scholarships. And the whole time they were sitting there talking, I thought, you know, these are children who will be recognized for working hard and showing, you know, and showing improvement and have an opportunity for college or for a two-year technical program. And, you know, I left there going, I feel really, really good at what we have done as collectively as a board and our community, our teachers, our staff, everybody, that we believe that all children should have an education and have a right to an education. So, I left, I left there going, I am so glad that I came to this press conference because it was just phenomenal what the Broad Foundation had to say. And then, was it Shelly who was leading the team? And I went over and said hello to her, and she said, you know, we've got a lot of places. And she said, wow, what you all are doing, and wow, for being here at Oak Ridge. And so, you know, it just, and it all goes to the fact that we've been able to update our facilities. We've been able to avoid all of the budget cuts that our neighboring districts have done because of the generosity of this community. And so it was just one of those things, I don't think I'll ever forget it. It, it just felt really good, and it felt right.
Oh, wow, Ms. Cadel, as you speak, I think we're all excited about that. Mrs. Gould?
I just wanted to say how lucky I feel to be here at this time with, with, um, this kind of momentum going on. And to echo, uh, some of the thoughts that Mrs. Cadel had about, um, the investment the community has made, um, and the partnership. It's not just the financial investment, it's the true partnership and belief that, um, we should be nothing but the best in this country. And I think that's immensely valuable. And to have the leadership that we have, not only in the superintendent, but her team, we are, um, truly blessed at this time to, to all be having this experience. So, it's great for the community, and it's certainly fabulous for us.
Wow, God, all of these comments, it's so great. Mrs. Christine Moore, your part, you were there with us, and we were so thankful.
I was, no, I was, Mrs. Gordon, and it was really inspiring, uh, to meet the Broad team and, and get to speak with some of them. And so that was, you know, a conversation that I, uh, was able to have, that I've been able to share with others. And one of the things that they said, that how, as Mrs. Gould said, we were incredibly blessed to have Dr. Jenkins, and, and one of the reasons they thought that we were up for this award was because of, of you. So she certainly reiterated that. Um, the other, the piece was that they felt that, I asked them about Florida and Miami Dade, and, and, and how we're starting to see Florida coming on in, in the nation in terms of academic pursuits and excellence. And, uh, she, uh, really affirmed that some of the legislative changes in Tallahassee, while painful, she thought really, um, were at the root of, of some of the reasons why, uh, Florida districts were doing much better than other parts of the country. And so I, it was able to talk to him. I had only gone to the council great city schools for the first time last fall in Albuquerque, and I was astounded to, to speak to some of these other board members to see how different the makeups of their districts were and, and how their cities were still divided, you know, along racial lines. I was just stunned. So I asked the researcher, "How much did you think that the, the, uh, forward momentum of Florida school districts was related to having countywide schooled systems?" And she said, "Well, um, I think it only works if you all embrace one another, as long as you didn't have different, you know, parts of the county being upset with other parts and different demographics, you know, fighting others." And, and so she said, "Yes, it has the potential for greatness, but that Orange County, we had embraced it, and that we really worked together as a team." So it was just, it was a fabulous experience for me to, to talk to someone who's an expert and, and can look at us, you know, from this other perspective that we don't have, you know, comparing us to other school districts across the country. And the enthusiasm they had for being here, you know, was, it was just infectious. And, and so today I had a conversation with some, um, chamber members about the two taxes, and, you know, I was really able to come back and say to them, "Well, I understand nobody likes to pay taxes, but do you think we would be getting to these levels of excellence if we took all that money away?" And you could tell that he understood that, no, we probably wouldn't. And so, when we talk about this award for the next few months, it really is because of the graciousness and, and the generosity of everyone in the county, because it, it really does take everyone to make this happen. So, thank you, Dr. Jenkins, to your staff, and, and I know we'll continue to thank not only the, the students and the families, but the entire community, because without them, I, I don't think we would be even close to having these kinds of celebrations. So, thank you.
Wow, I think, Dr. Jenkins, that pretty sums up the wonderful visit. I want to really say hats off to you and your team and to Dr. Kathy Pope, um, and Dr. Jara. Uh, that little disc was my lifesaver. That was my lifesaver, because everything Kathy gave me in that packet to study, they didn't ask me none of that. I'm sitting up here thinking I'm gonna be asked about the committees and the board and how we work and operation, that she was very strict about operations and policies. She wanted to know, when do you cross the line? Have you ever crossed the line? And I thought, oh, yeah, a couple of times all of us crossed the line. And she just chuckled because she was a superintendent herself, and I think she understood. But I said, Kathy, there was nothing in here. And I, and I kind of busted Dr. Jara. I said, "I want one of those little discs that you gave everybody." And I was reading the discs on the way here, and I could not thank you enough because your team was so well-prepared. And, um, just listening to you, but they asked me about security. What was our relationship with the sheriff department, with the police department? What about our security in the building? How do we govern that? Do we have retreats? What about the legal department? Is there a really well-established legal department? I said, "Yes, there's a Gordon Law Firm here." And, um, I, I just love it. I said, "I, I couldn't believe it, but I, I could not believe what they had asked." They asked me all about Dr. Jara's office. I have no idea what Dr. Jara, what he do. I'm just kidding. I mean, they asked me about Dr. J, I'm going, oh, my God, I, you know. But I didn't do, oh, my God in there, you know. I just rattled off, and she was going, yes, yes, yes. I said, "Am I answering your questions?" She said, "Yes." And then, when she started asking me about Mr. Morris, I really felt great. Because, see, I really felt great because I feel I'm the assistant chief facility person when it comes to, um, Jasmine, all of us in the board, allowing us to write those policies. But then she wanted to know, where does the parents fit in? How do they help design schools? And I said, "Well, Deborah McGill over there will give you our policy that the board worked in a work session and approved, that the architects just can't walk in our schools anymore and give us a school, but they have to go through steps and procedures." Then, Joey, you were right, they drilled me on the budget. Was I happy that I was on the budget committee? And that we always do the capital budget? I didn't even know I knew that much about the budget. I think the only thing I got wrong, I said something about 70%, and I think it was 80% of something. So I, I, and she corrected me, she said, "Oh, no, it's 80." I said, "Okay, I agree with you." And she was on the floor. And, um, and, but, but Dr. Pope, and then she started asking about the minority achievement gap. What were we doing to attract males? And I could not believe it. I said, "Well, Dr. Jenkins did this, and she put together the minority achievement gap program, and the board approved it." Then she wanted to know, how did we go about approving things that the superintendent brings to the board? And she wanted to know how, if we had an idea, how does a superintendent take that? Then she wanted to know what kind of personality Dr. Jenkins had. And I went, "Oh, my God." I said, "What are those leadership styles?" She said, "Yes, what are they?" I said, "Well, it's not laissez-faire," that's all I could remember. I said, "It's strong." And then she said, "Yes, strong, I'll write that down." And I'm going, "What happened to all my guidance skills, Kathy?" And that, uh, but, but she was very impressed with the achievement gap. But then, I kind of sneaked in, I didn't know that they had talked about the parent academy. But the parent academy started within those years that Joey talked about. I just happened to have had, in my briefcase, the parent academy from Waukesha. So Pam Gould, I had your workshop that we had gone to, and I said, "Let me show you the parent academy." And she said, "Let me take that booklet with me." I said, "I can't." She said, "Well, why not?" She said, "Because..." I said, "Because it's not, um, the years you want." She said, "That's all right, I'm gonna show this anyhow." So she took the parent academy, and I told her about, uh, Dr. Schula and her staff. But she wanted to know about the media, um, what type of relation we had and happened. I'm a union member, she asked him about the union, how we get along, you know. I said, "Oh, there have been some good times, and there have been some bad times." I said, "And right now, we're kind of going through some, you know, rough times, and we're, we're trying to work it out." And she said, "Well, I've been a superintendent, and that's, um..." When I read in her memo, she said, "I understand." And she said, "You'll, you'll get it together, you all will come together." And I said, "Yeah, but you know, we're, it's like mother, daughter, mother, son, father, son." But I, I just thought that it was just incredible how they drilled me. And, um, I thought Kathy gave me that beautiful little folder with all of the little board things, and not one question was asked. But, Dr. Jenkins, they were very impressed with your leadership. They are very impressed with your leadership style and your team. And know what she asked me? "How come you all know how to answer this exactly the same?" I said, "I don't know what they're asking, because I teach in Kissimmee, and I run over here every afternoon, so I don't know what that..." She said, "Well, you all are answering exactly the same." But we never had a rehearsal. And I told her it was based, as Joey stated, on our strategic plan. And then she started drilling me about the area superintendent and how, how many board members work with so many area superintendents. And I told her the districts are very large and that they're only the ones in the middle because of the, the geographics that we share, maybe two or three, uh, area superintendents. But I really just, they were impressed with the magnet programs. They were even impressed with the, um, materials on the charter schools, especially for those that were, um, successful. So, I really just, thank you all. I'm like Joey, I think I grabbed Dr. Bernia and Dr. Lawson, and I had to get it out. And, um, Nancy heard me back there, because I'm not quiet. And she says, "Shh, we can hear you." Because I cannot believe that I was, um, really drilled like that, but it was a wonderful experience, and I'm glad that we did know, and Kathy did say, she said, "Well, you know the district, and I think that's what's gonna help you." But if I had known, I would have really studied a little more about Laura's food program. Because the last one I had gone to was at the Rose and Shingle Creek and one of the other hotels, but she was impressed that the students were able to select the food. And then I had not kept up with the bus drivers like I normally do, and she wanted that. I said, "Oh, Lord, I could use Rimerium right now." And she wanted that, I said, oh, Lord, I could use Rimerium right now. But I told her about the Road D.O. and the winning bus drivers that we have in our safety records. She was impressed with that. And then I told her about the new buses, how they try every year to get brand-new facilities and that that's approved to the board. But I just could not believe that all of that, she pulled out this notebook and she went down, she didn't miss one question, did she, Joey?
Oh, they didn't get to all the questions with me. But I have one question for you.
Okay.
Did they ask you, not only did they ask the superintendent's strength, but they asked the superintendent's weakness?
Oh, yes.
So once again, it was like,
I used yours.
Take a deep breath.
Yes, I did. I used yours. And I'm going to tell you what she said. I said, well, when we were interviewing her, I said, but I know her. I said, because she came up through our system and she was like a role model for me as an administrator when I wanted to become an administrator. And I said, she became the principal of one of our finest schools in your area, Joey. And I said, I was very impressed. I said, but one thing that was told to her during the interview about her smiling, you know? And I said, that was, she said, oh, about her smiling? I said, yes. I said, one of the board members, you know, called her out about it. She said, well, since we've been here, I've seen nothing but smiles. And we just cracked up laughing. So I told her, I said, it took a little while, you know? And I said, I guess she was learning us, which she already knew. I said, but wanting things to be better, she did ask me, how high did Mr. Blocker take us? And I showed her the plateau. I said, he knew he reached his plateau. And he said, that's why she was his protege. And he knew that she would catapult us a little bit higher. And I thought, she thought that was so good. She gave me a couple of words, too. She said, oh, I'm going to use this. You think she's an influence? I said, yes, yes. So she wrote down, oh, she's an influence to the team. So I thought that was very, very good. All right? So with that in mind, any other comments from the board member as it relates to our experience with the Eli? Okay, that was awesome. Okay. With that in mind, I need to find out, are there any statement of policy level issues the board would like to agenda for subsequent meetings or work sessions? And I passed out your work sessions on behalf of the chairman to you. And our timing is pretty good right now and I'm glad we took the time for the Broad. And I hope we get to talk about it with each other, because as Joey stated, there was so much more that we need to share, because we would want to hope that we would get it again and again and again. Okay? Because they do look for urban districts that want to improve. All right? Now, I'm hearing no more comments from the board. I want to thank those that commented. Pam is on, all right?
I know we've talked about getting a work session and I don't see it on here, so maybe I'm dismissing it.
The chairman said he's going to revise this
Okay.
for the new up and coming, and I think it comes after our retreat. I had a note on here.
Because we had it on our agenda, we had requested, multiples of us had requested one on kind of the processes of, that we've been discussing and that we've gotten the letters from the West Orange Chamber and then the one that was read here last week from the Builders Association about our timing and our processes and all of those things. So I just want to make sure it just.
Okay, so Dr. Jenkins, will you make note of that, you and Mrs. McGill, to give to the chairman? I think this is his final here, where it ends in June. And then I think it's going to pick up a little, I think he said he's going to do a new one. And then don't forget, there's a retreat and the superintendent's summit. For those of you that have never been or have not been under Dr. Jenkins, I highly recommend that superintendent's summit. I believe that would probably help me to answer a lot of the questions by going to the summit, because you can't see everything in the building. So I highly recommend that summit to you. I think it's already adjourned on your calendar. And if you could be there, I ask that you do that. So hearing that there are no issues, except the one that Ms. Gould, Ms. Cadel, has one that we would like to agenda?
Well, actually, I just want to thank the superintendent and the board members for, we're going to do the tipping point on June 5th.
Now, that's the end of it, isn't it?
That's the end. Well, we've got four more hours of master board training, but this is, this is the opportunity for all of us to work with, you've invited all of cabinet, correct? To participate, to participate in the tipping point. And we did it about six years ago and it really, it really is kind of an energizing day. It is, it's a long day and the city of Winter Park has been a great partnership and we'll be going to the new community center in Winter Park for the retreat, or for the board training. So, you know, I think we'll, we'll walk away with a greater respect for all of the skills that all of the leadership teams bring.
Well, I might catch the tail end, but because I'm still teaching, I'm still teaching and doing inventory. So I love that. And I missed it because I use my personal days, I only get six personal, and I use those, you know, to go to Washington and lobby and then I use it to go to National School Board. Okay. And FSBA, but they did ask about that, Joey. They asked about that. They asked about master board and they asked about FSBA meetings and do we get to go and do we go on the national level? And I told her that we do have representatives for every level and that they go and bring back the information and share it. So with that in mind, I'm going to ask our general counsel to just sum up for us our executive session and we're going to break for that. And hopefully, ladies and gentlemen of the board, if we could make it as quick as possible to go upstairs, as soon as we adjourn, take care of our little needs and come right in the room, then hopefully we could get these items, these two items done. We haven't adjourned yet. Let me get Mr. General Counsel to tell us what we're doing upstairs.
The two notice sessions, one is on the Freedom from Illusion, the other one is on West Orange, so.
Okay. And with that in mind.
Back to back. Thank you.
Okay, so we will adjourn. Our work session is on June 5th and I want you to know at 7:12, board is adjourned. I will meet you upstairs when we will reconvene.